All right, I'd like to call to order Town Council Public Hearing in Regular Meeting, February 15th, 2024, Cape Charles Civic Center. And could I get a roll call, please?
Buck Coles, President.
Holloway, President.
How's Julie? Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, we're just doing roll call, you're good.
Holloway, President.
Bennett, President.
Rosen, President.
You're on.
Peter, President, calling from Richmond, Virginia.
Thank you.
Former Brethren calling town with honor.
All right, let it be known we've established a quorum. We can all rise for a moment of silence and pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, number three, public hearing for the lease of harbor property to the Maritime Institute.
Susan Berger.
You signed up for the wrong one?
Oh, did you want to speak at the regular meeting public comments? Is that what you signed up for?
Yes.
Okay, I'll move it.
It's like that bad dream you have, you didn't study for the test.
And the second one is Diane Davis.
Must be bound sheet.
Okay.
So we have no one speaking, go ahead.
No one else has signed up for the public hearing.
All right.
A mic motion that we close public hearing.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Closes public hearing towards a lease of harbor property. Number four, all right, we've got quite a few visitors here this evening, and we are going to start off with a certificate of appreciation to Michael Strab. And this certificate of appreciation, this certificate is awarded to Michael Strab in recognition of his dedication to the town of Cape Charles and its citizens for his 13-plus years of service as a planning commissioner and three-plus years as the planning commission representative for the Historic District Review Board. A number of significant projects came to fruition during his tenure, as well as numerous text amendments to the zoning ordinance and rewrites of the comprehensive plan and historic district guidelines, along with over 200 applications for renovations, rehabilitations, and new construction projects in the Historic District. Mr. Strab has been instrumental in assisting the town through a true renaissance and significant capital investment in the commercial and harbor areas of the town. Thank you very much. He's accepting this award on his behalf?
Yeah, I can make sure he gets it.
There we go. Thank you so much. All right, second on the agenda for this evening is our semi-annual presentation from Main Street.
Here, Bill, what I'm going to do is give you these real quick. All right. If you haven't met our new marketing admin, Emily Rayfield, Emily's been with us now since September, and she's doing a great job, and we are so happy to have her. All right, our board, our board has had a few changes over the last few months. Of course, we lost Reggie Widgeon this past year, and Reggie has now been replaced by David Gomino, and Molly Pickren has retired from the board, and she has been replaced by Jane McKinley. We are getting ready to actively look for a new co-chair because Pat James also retired from the board. So we have an open position there, and we also have an open position for business liaison. As far as the numbers go, I think we're going to talk more about some of these projects individually real quick, but the big ones are that currently between grants we're managing and marketing town support we've spent in the first six months, we're at $402,234. So we hope we're delivering value to the town, and we hope you'll agree that we have. One of the big things that we just completed, of course, was under beautification, was the permanent lighting in Mason Avenue, to the tune of $51,000 there. But we'll talk more about some of these in a few minutes. This is small, but hopefully you have it in a packet. If not, I, oh, you don't have it, okay. I will, I know that Libby has the packet, has this presentation. I just showed in here what grants are currently open and which ones we've closed in the first six months. We're currently at, closed to date, we've done $167,780 closed out grants, and we currently have $195,353 open. And our grant rounds are coming up to be done again here in the next couple of months. We just recently completed a campaign to get a beach wheelchair. I want to thank everybody who donated to that, we were so excited. We will be providing two beach wheelchairs to the town in the next few weeks. Of course, thank you to volunteers. Again, in the first half of this year, we've put in 4,266 hours of time made up between Love Fest Festive Fridays and our ever-hard-working board. And marketing Cape Charles, we have, we have, whoops, we're out of order, but let me skip to that, I can skip up and make that happen. I think you know that we started a Cape Charles gift card program that got launched in June, so in the first six months, we loaded $11,751 on those cards. To date, there's been $53,148 spent, we still have $6,400 in chain outstanding. It averages right now almost $2,000 a month in cards, so that's money that's out there still to be spent in the town of Cape Charles. Social media, our social media is taking on a life of its own right now. We've recently invested a lot more in that social platform. We currently have new website users of 111,132, that's up 53% in the first six months of this fiscal year. And so it's absolutely exploding. Our engagement rate is just off the charts. And if you aren't familiar with, if you aren't familiar with the social media platform, what engagement means is the measure of how valuable users who engage with your site think the information they get there is, and how much time they spend then looking at that information. So it's incredibly, incredibly good right now. I'm going to let Bill talk about the financials real quick.
So these are the financials for the first six months. $248,458 in income and 254,566 spent. Now, I've told you before that we have a crossover from fiscal years, so that's why we're still okay. I mean, even though it shows that we're down about $6,000, but that's just, that's the, we have grants that haven't come in that we've, we have to pay to get the receipts and stuff. So anyway, but just for comparison, you'll notice that the events projects expense is $143,572 for this six months. The two big items on that, Karen mentioned it before, is $51,000 for lights that we put down on the Mason Avenue, and the other one was $63,730 for the train. So that's what we have. The only other thing I want to mention is we had a very successful Festive Fridays this year. Last year, we had $1,123 in profit on Festive Fridays. This year, $18,159. If you have any questions, let me know. Thank you.
And before I move to the next slide, we did pass out a quick chart, I just got them yesterday, so they're not in your packet. VTC, Virginia Tourism, has a new product that we applied for, and they gave us a copy of the software to use for the first year. It's called Arrivalist. I was able to go in and pull 2022 versus 2023, I pulled the whole year's visitation in Northampton County. So I think it's very clear, our marketing is working. We said we would try not to market in the summertime, because if you look at '22, you can see in the blue how much the marketing and how many of the visitors come in those three months. When you look at '23, you can see how things have really started to spread out. And so obviously, I think we're still, we're going in the right direction, and we will continue to do that. So I plan to put together a bigger presentation with more details on some of our visitation that's happened over the past year, and when I do that, I'll just send that out to you electronically. What's next? I think we talked about this last time, but we have three key projects that we're devoting our time to this year. It's the continuation of the, obviously, the visitor center and completing the train. We have work going on in the train as we speak. We want to get shade done for Strawberry Street Plaza, and we want to, we're starting work on the entrance to Cape Charles. We talked about the beautification of that in our last update, and that project is just getting kicked off. So what we've done so far is we got together with all of the major stakeholders to talk about what this project might look like and how we might phase it. We wanted to wait until we got our new design team on, that's David Gomino and Jane McKinley. So David and Jane are taking the project over, and they're beginning the research on some of the ownership up and down the north and south side, all the way out to 13. We are going to be starting gathering input from stakeholders, consulting with architects, et cetera. So David and Jane are on top of this project, and they've added it to their work plan for this year. The other thing that I want to just quickly touch on is Sail 250, and I don't think a lot of people are aware that in 2026, we are bringing the Tall Ships back to Cape Charles, and that was a big hit, as I understand, back in 2012 and 2015. So we are starting to form committees. The Cape Charles Tall Ships will be June 19th to 22nd, 2026. So that is a very big project, it'll bring a lot of people and money into the town of Cape Charles. So any questions, happy to answer. If not, I just, oh, go ahead.
I was just going to say, on the Tall Ships, I'm assuming that everything we talked about from our previous meeting is fine, everything's in?
Yep.
Moving forward?
Yep, everything is in and moving forward, and the committees are starting to be formed, and I'm already starting to get people asking to be on committees. So I'm going to start filling out those committee sheets and getting those people involved on each one as well. So if nothing else, I just want to thank the Town Council for their continued support of Main Street, and we hope we deliver what you signed up for.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next on the agenda, we have the Memorial Library Board presentation.
Lovely. Okay. Good evening, Mayor Charney, and members of the Town Council. I'm Richard Berger, chairperson of your Cape Charles Memorial Library Board. On behalf of the board, I thank you for giving me the opportunity to present this year-end report on library activities in 2023. Please note at the outset that you have a packet in addition to this slideshow, giving detailed information about month-to-month activities, staff development participation, and grants received by the library. I will be referring to that packet periodically in the course of this presentation. The state of our library is strong. Let's begin with one big number. Last July, we had over 2,000 visitors to the library, almost 100 per day that the library was open, an amazing number for any small-town library. Like much of Cape Charles, we are struggling with explosive growth versus staffing infrastructure to support this growth, but we persevere. Slide two. CCML by the numbers. More than 16,000 people walked through our doors last year, a 25% increase from the year before. 246 new library cards were issued, an increase of 35%. Circulation grew by over 2,000 units, a 15% increase. Our incredible library staff ran 59 special programs, both for children and adults. You may see them all listed in the month-by-month packet. We must recognize that our tiny library is a thriving hub of community activity. Next slide. Our staff, Sharon Sovey, library manager on the right, Betsy Doherty, full-time staff in the middle, and Maureen Tamaras-Meddits, part-time employee on the left. And special thanks to Betsy and Maureen for helping put together this slideshow, and to Sharon for all of her advice. Take a look at the small photo on the lower left of Sharon at a table in the main library room, papers spread out around her as she works on a grant proposal. Why in the bustling main library, you may ask? Because she has no office in the current configuration of the library. Despite the challenges to the physical structure of the library, this small but mighty band participated in 19 trainings and staff development activities last year on and off-site, put together and ran again 59 special programs inside and outside of the library, applied for and received seven grants totaling over $10,000. Again, you may see your packet for more details on this. Our library staff is truly astounding and deserves our admiration and our thanks every day. Our library board, next slide, thank you. Yeah, that tall, good-looking guy in the red t-shirt. Our library board, you may read their names yourselves, but I will point out that Karen Mahaffey is designated as our vice chair this year, and Kathy Fox is our secretary. In addition to our monthly meetings and working on library issues, both great and small, helping to frame policy, and I want to thank the council for your assistance in revision of the book challenge policy last year, and assisting with programming, the library board also gave 242 hours of volunteer time in the library last year. And speaking of kudos, a shout-out to board member Andrew Fulmer, who is with us audibly, I think, for his input on this presentation. Going back to that 242 hours, that's roughly six weeks of assistance in the library. And Diane, could you stand as one of our library board members? Be acknowledged, thank you. Next slide. Friends of the library, thank you Pat Tinkelman and Elizabeth Forker and other members of this group who raised money to supplement our budget. They had four books sales last year, which attracted hundreds of customers. Next. Some of you may recognize the striking individual in the lower right, frequently seen in the library. Just above that person's head, you may be able to read on a background that we just randomly selected and added to this slide without much foresight. You'll see the title Sea Biscuit by Laura Hildebrand. I have the pleasure of formally announcing tonight that Sea Biscuit has been chosen as our book for the townwide read this year. More information for that will come later. When one thinks of a library and the librarian's duties, what comes to mind? They check out books, they check in books, they shelve books, simple. But here in Cape Charles, the library serves, I'm sorry, next slide, as a de facto welcome center, answering visitors and community members' questions on a variety of not-quite-library topics. Here's a new one from me. Did you know that if you have a court-ordered driving safety remediation course, you may be ordered to take that computer-based test in the library because someone has to proctor you? Betsy will be standing at your shoulder. And of course, there are the usual, the bottom half of that slide and the next slide, all the things that go on in a library, plus collection development and genealogy research and hosting school groups, and homeschool students and their parents, and grant applications, and grab-and-go bags, and storytime crafts, and deliveries to homebound patrons. And you know, these programs don't just appear out of thin air. Some of our special programs for children and adults. The Seed Library, thanks to Betsy again, and the Friends Group, beautifying gardens all over Cape Charles. Our community helpers, the fire department visited the library, and Mr. Crisp, Crispman, I can speak, and Brady, what goes on under the streets, showing children what goes on here. Next. Yes, mimes are still quite popular here. And of course, the dairy godmother will grant your wish if you wish for ice cream, thanks to the Eastern Shore Soil and Water Conservation Group. Beach sanding with UVA's Coastal Research Center attracted 110 children and adults to the beach to see what's swimming around just below the surface and just around your feet. That was an amazing activity. And the owl prowls, the nature preserve beyond the concrete plant is filled with owls. Bill Dias will take you out there in the evening and call owls, and they come, and it's amazing. Three craft days serving 73 children, a fabulous puppet show teaching about Galapagos tortoises, thanks to the Virginia Commission for the Arts, and yes, my grandchildren are in one of these pictures. Cascading Carlos, exposing innocent children to flaming torches, don't try this at home. And many, many, many storytime dates. Please be aware, look at the picture closely, those cardboard box airplanes cannot be purchased from Amazon. Maureen constructed all of them for the children to sit in. And a display of found objects and a metal detector raffle that was held in the library, thanks to Matt Howell for donating that metal detector, and Bill Dias again was involved with that. And an adult program at the top of the slide, Deborah Alsco spoke on two different nights on road trips and June brides. That was a fun one. And finally, as far as special programs, joining the 21st century, we had our first streaming library series that was sponsored and helped fund it by the Friends of the Library. And wrapping up the year, four board members helped out with children's craft activities on two Festive Fridays, serving 293 children and their parents. As you can see, the state of our library is incredibly sound. Our staff is excellent. We offer the citizens of Cape Charles and our many visitors information about the town, the county, the state, and our beloved bay. We have educational entertaining programming for all ages, not limited to the four walls of our beautiful building, but extending throughout the town, the beach, and even under the bay. We have newspapers, and movies, and audiobooks, and graphic novels, and computers, and books. There are books in the library. And we have needs, needs of space and needs of staffing. I know, staffing costs money. And here I am concluding my remarks with a big ask instead of a simple thank you. But please, when the next round of budget consideration comes, please think of our library. Think of the services we offer. Consider the value of those services to the community, both for our residents and our visitors. Think of how our library enhances living in Cape Charles. Remember, please, this presentation tonight, and think about how the council could, by making our library even stronger, thereby make our community even stronger. Thank you. Questions?
Thank you very much.
All right, my pleasure.
All right, our next presentation this evening is from our fine Cape Charles Volunteer Fire Company and Mr. Ryan.
Good luck, Ryan.
I've got hard copies of the presentation as well for everybody. Have eyes like me after.
Thank you.
So my name is Ryan Peake, I'm the current treasurer of the Cape Charles Volunteer Fire Department, I'm also a firefighter. So our chief is here tonight, Jay Bell. Our deputy chief, Jeb Brady, was not able to make it, had a prior engagement with his family. Our assistant chief, Matt Pruitt. Our president is Bill Powell. Of course, I'm the treasurer, and then the rest of our team is here as well. Wanted to give a brief overview of our history as a fire department. I think a lot of people may not understand how long we've actually been involved in the town of Cape Charles. We've pretty much been here since the founding. The records that we've been able to find go back to 1890 to 1900, the first activities are firefighting being recorded in the town. Those activities were paid for by the railroad to begin with, which makes sense once we were developed by a railroad. 1921, we were officially incorporated as a fire station or as a volunteer fire company. In 1924, there was a large fire on Main Street, and that was what enabled us with the town to buy our first motorized fire truck, which we still have today. We did find out that our antique fire truck left the factory July 1st, 1924, so she will be 100 years old as of this year. She was actually still fighting fires in the early 1980s, so obviously, we don't use her anymore today, but we do still have her, and she is our pride and joy of our company. In 1931, the current municipal building was built, and we moved into the first floor of that, the current two bays that are there. And then 1958, we moved into the current fire station, which we do own. Just a brief overview of what we are and how we work. We are what's called a mutual aid fire department. We have our primary district, which is the town of Cape Charles in all of its entirety inside of the town limits. And then our other primary is out in the county, so we go basically from the Sheridan Light, Cherrystone, all the way down to the fourth parallel tunnel in the bridge tunnel. So we actually do have calls sometimes all the way out onto the tunnel. We are mutual aid for Sheridan and Eastville, so if Sheridan and Eastville get certain types of calls, so if it's a call for a house fire or a severe accident, we are also called to their scene and vice versa. So if we have a fire in town, and it's called in as a working fire, 911 automatically dispatches them as well, so we have backup resources. It's not just us. We are the primary resource, we will be the first on scene within the town limits, but we do have backup stations as well. On the next slide, this kind of shows our coverage area, so the town of Cape Charles within city limits is approximately three and a half square miles, and the remainder of our primary area is 34 and a half square miles, so we have roughly 38 square miles that we are responsible for as a station. Within our primary coverage area in the off-season, we have about 5,500 people that we take care of. In high season, that number jumps to 12,000. So that is the town of Cape Charles, that also includes the two larger campgrounds, Cherrystone and the KOA. So those numbers, Cherrystone, you know, 2,300, town, easily 2,000 or 3,000, and then also the KOA at certain times of the season. So we have a large jump in calls, obviously, through the summer season, sometimes we have a couple of calls a day. In Cape Charles, from 2018 to 2023, the town has added 221 single homes, five commercial buildings with an additional 29 housing units that we are in charge of protecting, and that is just within the town of Cape Charles. That is not including outside in the county. In 2023, we went on approximately 142 calls. 60 of those calls were fire or fire-related issues, and calls for others, 82, that's primarily your accidents and things of that nature. In 2023, 44% of those calls were within the town limits of Cape Charles. In 2023, we had approximately 2,369 volunteer hours, and what I mean by volunteer hour is... And what I mean by volunteer hour is if we were to go on a call, there are five people in the truck and we were out for an hour, that's five volunteer hours. So of those hours, 533 were spent on calls. 934 were spent on monthly meetings, trainings, and administrative duties. And our fundraising, we spent around 900 hours last year. We have five main fundraisers that we do in a year. Obviously, Toolmania is our main fundraiser that we do every year. We generally have two barbecues, our Fourth of July, and then last year, we added for the first time our fishing tournament, which we will be also doing again this year. Getting into our funding sources, the average yearly income for our fire department from 2019 to 2023 was around $176,000. And that's multiple different sources for income. Prior to '23, 65% of our revenue was through fundraising. But in 2023, Northampton County introduced a cigarette tax, which they have earmarked for volunteer fire departments in the county. So they were able to increase our yearly contribution from $35,000 to $75,000 a year. And that is going to be for the future as well. That is in place permanently. So for '23, Northampton County was 40-hoo percent of our revenue. Fundraising and donations was 37%. The town of Cape Charles was 10%. Also through the town of Cape Charles, through an ARPA grant, we earmarked 8% for new air tanks. That was mandated by the federal government. And once again, thank you, I know that is at the discretion of the town council and town manager of how that money is distributed. 2% was from community foundation and 1% from Northampton County Rescue Commission. The next page is our operating expenses for the year. So our primary expenses fall within insurance. So this year was at 16,000. We have been told that 2024 will be increasing that by an additional seven. Our supplies, gas, so the supplies for our trucks, gas for our trucks, 54,000. And then capital expense repair for this year was 70,000. We did, with the help of the additional funds from the county, were able to address some deferred maintenance on trucks and also continue to build our reserves for the department. Going into our reserve schedule, throughout 2023, we reached several milestones, including the continued growth of our reserve funds. Given the significant age of our apparatus and our building, with all apparatus being in our station over 24 years old, we've set aside $200,000 in our reserves. And working with some consultants in the industry, our reserve schedule is basically, if one of our fire truck motors went out, it's $75,000 to $100,000 to replace that. New transmission, 30 to 45. Fire pump is the actual pump that pumps water in emergencies, 40 to 65. And then also our roof is in need of replacement, which is 35 to 40. Where we struggle with these amounts in the reserve schedule, our trucks are worth 18 to 20,000. So putting 75 to 100 in a truck that's 24 years old, it's a struggle to go down that road. Those are only if things were to fail at this point. We're not looking at doing that immediately. It's just our reserves, if something were to happen to a piece of our equipment, that insurance would not cover. So looking forward, we are at the point that the department is going to have to start looking at purchasing a new fire engine. We were starting this process before COVID and then as we got into COVID, lead times went to two to three years to get a new fire truck. Those have started coming back down, but unfortunately, the price has not. They have stayed pre-pandemic or post-pandemic levels and we do not see that going down anytime soon. So there's two items we're looking into to be able to fund a new fire engine. The first is we do now qualify for municipal finance rates. So when we do go out to get this loan, we can qualify municipal rates. Part of that qualification process is we would need an agreement with the town of Cape Charles saying, we are going to provide fire services for the town. It's already in our company charter. That's not going to change, but the banks for us to qualify for the municipal, we actually had to have a formal agreement with the town stating, we're providing fire services for X amount of years. And all that does, there's no monetary value attached to that. It's just an agreement with the town stating, we are providing fire services and we are quote unquote, in contract to provide those services for the town. The second ask, and is a big ask, is we'd like to initiate talks with the town to review our current funding allocation. This review aims to address inflationary pressure and supports the stain the growth witnessed over the past five to six years in Cape Charles. Currently, the annual allocation stands at 25,000, supplemented by a portion of fees generated from new home construction permits. So we do get a percentage of each new home construction permit to the department. So that is our current allocation. And just kind of an illustration of where we're at and what's happened with the price of fire engines. So in 2018, we could have bought a five-year apparatus for around $150,000 to $200,000. That same apparatus today is around 500,000. If we were to go the new route, pre-pandemic, we were around 550,000. We are now approaching 800,000 to 900,000 for that same apparatus. There's no difference. It's the same apparatus. That's just the increases, unfortunately, through the pandemic that have occurred. So this is a community ask. The county has stepped forward and has increased our allocation. We continue to do as much fundraising as we can. As a reminder, we are 100% volunteer stationed. We all have full-time jobs. We all have families. When we get a call, we drop everything we have and go on these calls. We leave dinners. We leave birthday parties. We miss holidays. But that's what we signed up to do, is to protect this community. But we're asking for the community's help in turn to help us have the equipment we need to keep the community safe. So that's where we're coming to the town to ask, to ask, is to look into the contract so we can apply for a municipal rate and then also look at the current allocation and see if we could look at a possible increase to help us with inflationary issues that we've had over the past couple of years. So any questions, concerns?
Yeah, there's two questions. One, you know, we're turning over our utilities to Virginia American Water.
Yes, sir.
You've been keeping up to date on the new interface there and what they can do versus what we had done in the past?
Sure.
Okay. The other thing was, I've gone to board supervisors' meetings and I see other localities in express issues relative to being able to get enough volunteers.
Right.
And they're talking about even going so far as perhaps paying, which is a big, big change. But how do you see that here in your department?
We're fortunate to have a healthy department and we have plenty of members. We, I don't think I can remember a call we didn't actually go on. We have enough to staff our trucks. It's a struggle for all departments. A lot of people don't realize in the United States, 74% of departments are volunteer. And it's a struggle for all the departments. We've looked into grants. We can get grants all day long for four, five, $6,000 or through the town for the replace the tanks. To get a grant to replace an $800,000 fire truck? No. We're in a fortunate department. You know, we have a healthy income that keeps us operating from day to day, but when we have to go out to buy an apparatus, then we start hitting that brick wall of how do we finance this as a volunteer department and continue to serve the communities we have for the past 120 years? So to answer your question, we're good, but the issues we're having now is more on the equipment side than the staffing side.
Somebody other locales said they can't even respond to some of the calls.
Right. And you also look into other locales, so Akemak County and then going into some other states for volunteers, there is actually a fire tax district, which we do not have in Northampton County that funds the department. In Akemak County, they do have that, as well as the majority of the stations there, you have the fire department and also EMS, which is part of that fire department. Well, every EMS call that department goes out on, they get an X amount of dollars. So they may make $500,000 in a year just going on EMS calls. Now, that has to pay for their EMS equipment, but that is, it's one department. So they're also to use those funds to buy new fire trucks. We don't have that. We're separated here in Cape Charles, so we don't have that additional income. It's basically, we're looking to the county, the town of Cape Charles, and then also our community through fundraising. So those are our three primary sources of funding. Now, if the town has some inroads into grants, we're more than welcome to look into those and start working on those grants. But the research that we've done, and we're not grant writers, I'm not a grant writer, we cannot find any grants that go out and say, well, here's 500,000 for a truck or $200,000 for a truck. We're at the point where when we do decide to move forward with the new truck, sooner than later, we will have to finance for 10 to 12 years and find a way to finance that $60,000 to $100,000 a year to pay for that note.
Anybody else?
So when do you need that agreement done by?
We're just starting it, to be quite honest, Mr. Hosee. If we go the new route, we're a year and a half out from getting a truck. If we go the used route, it's, we just start the search. It's something that we can start and, I mean, I know you're starting to go into budget season the next couple of months, if we could just start having discussions and then go from there. I don't know how much is involved to get an agreement done and how much work on the town side with legal it is to get something like that in place. I can submit some draft agreements.
That's what I was going to ask. I don't think that's a heavy lift at all.
Okay.
If you've got a draft that we could start on?
Sure.
Would you send it to me?
Absolutely. So we're working with the financing company, so I can reach out to them. They have some draft agreements they've used in other locales and see if that will start the direction that we need to go there.
Okay. Great.
You were saying a new truck, you're a year and a half out.
If we sign the contract today, we're a year and a year and a half out. If used, you have to start looking on the market. It's something that we don't want to go out and buy a 15- or 20-year-old truck because then we're back in the same situation in five years where we need to start looking for another truck. We, as a department, I say all of our equipment is 24 years old. We have our main fire engine that we fight fires with, and then we also have a rescue engine that's primarily for rescue and extraction from vehicle accidents. That is also a pumper as well. So we have a redundant pumper in our station. If our primary engine went down, we do have a backup, but they're both 24 years old. So you get into those discussions of, well, if your primary and your backup are 24 years old, it's just a matter of time before something may happen. So as a department, for us to continue to serve the community, we have to replace the truck and we will do that one way or the other. It will happen. We're just looking at, do we go the used route or are we going to have the funding to look at a new apparatus? All right. I appreciate it. Thanks, everybody, for letting us speak.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for all you do, you guys.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Governor. All right, moving on to public comments. We do have a couple sign up by now.
Susan Berger?
Hi. I'm Susan Berger. I have to tell you where I live? 550 Madison Avenue. And this just came up in my mind today and Richard and I were away for a couple of days last week and learned that the Seabreeze Apartments had to evacuate essentially everyone in there. And it occurred to me that there's a lot of housing in Cape Charles that goes unused during this time of year and wondered if there was a way that folks who are, who have short-term rentals that are empty during the winter, if they could be approached to maybe provide some. I know that the folks are in the motels and I've been a social worker for many years. I know what people living in hotels have to deal with and I'm sure that a home would be a lot more functional for families. So I was just wondering if there was something that the town could do to perhaps propose that to some folks, either to do it as individuals or as the town. But I just wanted to put that out there as something that maybe we should think of to help these folks. They're part of our community. That's all.
Thank you.
Diane Davis?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, town manager, and clerk. I am Diane Davis of 6001 Jefferson Avenue. And I have some concerns. As you know, my main concerns are usually the sidewalks and the youth in Cape Charles. Right now, we're losing the youth in Cape Charles and it's so sad. And I was going to talk about the same thing that she mentioned at Seabreeze, but my concern is Seabreeze, those apartments are in the town of Cape Charles. And for several years, I have been trying to ask someone, because they say they were under lease, and no one seems to be able to answer that question. And the number that I have tried calling their company and no one answers. But it seemed like to me, somebody in Cape Charles should be able to say that they have this lease, even though it's private, that somebody should know how long this lease is going to last. Because I do know when that lease is up, that's prime property. I believe that Seabreeze is going to be gone. But if you can help me, and I know you can't respond to me right now, but please tell me what I can do as far as trying to reach these people and find out what is going on. Because I understand with the people moving out now, I understand some of them are in hotels, but some people were put out for some reason before this started. But I'm just concerned because my kids are gone that I have always been talking about. And with Ms. Berger, what she mentioned, that sounds great, but our people can't afford to pay the type of rent that these people would be asking for. Yes, we're in the serious problem. And please keep in mind our young people because we don't want everybody to leave town and just have some of your older, younger people. Okay. But we must, and of course, in this summer, we have the tours. They're coming. Those youth are coming and I'm concerned about them too because we need things for them. But these people that are here year-round, I'm really concerned about them and whatever we can do for them. I know you have no control over Seabreeze, but we need to know what's going on. And I understand, I was talking to somebody, somebody from the town was with them when they walked through or whatever. So I just want to be knowledgeable. And my very last comment, you know, you have people who have worked for this town on committees and all down through the years. And I just feel that anyone who has served on a board for more than 10 years, that certificate is nice, but I think they deserve at least a plaque or something. That's a long time for them to give in their time. They're not being paid. My comment to you all. Thank you.
Thank you.
No one else has signed up, but I do have two comments submitted in writing.
Okay.
First one is from Julie Jones. Says, "Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Town Council, and Mr. Hosee. My name is Julie Jones. My husband Sam and I live full-time at 538 Monroe Avenue. Back in November, when you were presented with options for managing the short-term rental program here in Cape Charles, several of you indicated you needed more information. On January 7, 2024, the Cape Charles Mirror published an article written by Rachel Creed, a graduate student at George Mason University, with a lot of documented information about the housing crisis here on the eastern shore. With the crisis last week for 11 families at the Seabreeze Apartments, I decided perhaps sharing this information with you now might give you what you need to address the lack of affordable housing in the town of Cape Charles. Can you please be part of the solution for giving working families the option of living affordably in the town of Cape Charles and not part of the problem?" She asked that I read as much of this next article as I can in the three-minute time slot. Says, "The eastern shore of Virginia is in the midst of a housing scarcity crisis. With a total population of 45,446, there are 10,083 vacant residential units, yet only 5% are available for sale or rent. This starkly contrasts with the Virginia State average of 25%. Although many of these homes are abandoned, dilapidated, and condemned, a staggering 56% of unoccupied units have been designated as vacation rentals. No existing regulations prohibit the number and density of these temporary rentals and efforts to establish such regulations are actively opposed by both local and state representatives. The burden of securing housing is placed on the low-income residents of the eastern shore. According to the ANPDC Regional Housing Study, the average rental cost for a rental union as of 2021 was $733 in Northampton County. However, as of December 13, 2023, the combined total of 18 available rental units in both counties indicates an average monthly rental cost of $1,947. In Northampton County, 20% of renters earn less than $10,000 annually. Almost half of the residents in the region are over the age of 55 and 25% are over the age of 65. As many retire or age out of their professions, it is no surprise that 1,522 eastern shore residents rely upon social security income, also referred to as disability. residents rely upon social security income, also referred to as disability benefits, to meet their needs. Although the eastern shore offers enticing opportunities for budding professionals in their chosen field, the lack of housing makes accepting employment an impossibility. In a 2021 survey, 76% of local employers reported that the absence of affordable housing has directly resulted in an uphill battle to hire and retain employees. Of the 17 business entity representatives who responded, 243 employment positions could not be filled, and 92 to 102 potential new hires declined employment offers because they could not find any housing on the eastern shore. As the search for affordable housing become..." Okay. Okay, this next one is from Stuart Smith, 27 Kings Court, Cape Charles. He said he submitted an executive summary. It said, "It is irrelevant that Cape Charles Marine Services lost its yacht center business. If they had a dependency on the yacht center to achieve profitability on the contract, the risks of contract execution still fall squarely on CCMS, not the boating public nor citizens of Cape Charles. It's not the town's obligation to guarantee CCMS a profit. The newly established $3 per foot charge was on top of 30% increases in three years prior to the contract initiation. Given the inflation pressures on all boaters, optional activities become less important priorities and constrain budgets. Raising rates on average working-class boaters bears a significant risk of losing revenues for the town and merchants. A two-night weekend stay would be $250 for a 35-foot boat. The town may be happy with the contract since negotiation produced results the town desired more revenue to the town, less costs through shedding town staff and their expense. But my experience as a boater is maintenance was very poor, infrequent, and often done under pressure from town staff after long delays, even with general town supportive materials and labor payments that were readily available. Indeed, it is the very reason for a maintenance budget surplus. The key reasons for revenue increases were pandemic-related as boating underwent massive expansion, starting in March 2020, and the number of boats purchased driving transient volumes beyond historic norms as families looked for a form of escape from COVID restrictions. This expansion has absolutely nothing to do with any management capabilities of CCMS. Combined boating expansion and a massive price increase are responsible for all of the revenue increases. I urge council to do due diligence on the notes presented in the background section below." And has recommendations. "Due to an extremely skewed, very biased rate comparison, I recommend council reject a transient rate increase, which will mostly impact boaters that are already facing extreme budget issues and deny their families reasonably priced access to Cape Charles Harbor when compared to local alternatives. I recommend that the proposed rate sharing formula be adopted if council find it in the best interest of the town. Regards."
All right, on to number six. Consent agenda approval of agenda format, approval of minutes, and approval of December 31 financial report.
I'll make a motion after you accept the consent agenda.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
All right.
He was in favor. I think he just came in late.
Yeah, just late on. All right, so the agenda format has been moved. Move to the minutes?
No, that's part of, that's part of the consent agenda.
Oh, okay. All right, no unfinished business, all the new business, Cape Charles Marine Service Contract Amendment.
So, Mr. Mayor, as you know, we had recently talked to Cape Charles Marine Services about extending their contract one year to give us time to figure out what our long-term strategies might be. We haven't decided what we want to do long-term there, whether we keep it as a contract or whether we take it back, but we just needed some more time to figure that out. So they agreed to go ahead and extend their contract by another year until December of this year, which we've already done. But they did ask for consideration of some of the contract terms. They provided some information here that shows that while revenues have increased over the years that they've been managing it, just by the nature of the way the management agreement was structured, their management fees have actually decreased in that same timeframe. That also coincides with very high inflation over the past three years. It got to the point where their operating expenses now exceed the fees they get to do the job. So in order for them to continue to do this at a, at a, at a high quality for the remainder of the year, we needed to make some adjustments. So the plan we came up with was meant to be a budget neutral, meaning we would raise some revenues that would cover any additional costs. And since we have not raised rates in three years, and, and because we don't know for sure what our long-term is, we didn't want to go do an across-the-board increase in rates, but we, we thought a 12% increase in the non-resident transient rates was appropriate. It's, it's relatively consistent with other marinas in the, in the area, and it's roughly equivalent to, you know, the inflation that's incurred in those three years. That plus an increase of 20 cents per gallon in fuel costs, we believe would fund additional fees for the, for the consultant, that's on page three, that shows some of the increases for dockage utilities, warfage, fuel, et cetera. We think that this would allow the consultant to manage the harbor and not, not pay us for the privilege, buy us the time we need to figure out what the long-term solution is. So I would like to recommend that you approve the, the change, the contract amendment and the change in rates as, as outlined.
Make a motion? Yeah, I'll make a motion that we approve the rate changes in the Cape Charles Marine Services Contract Amendments.
Second. Any discussion?
I have a question with regard to the fuel cost. It's just awkwardly written, I think. Is that 60 cents a gallon to 80 cents a gallon? Or it just says .6?
Yes.
So it's a 20 cent?
Yes, 20 cents.
Per gallon increase?
Yes. And we, so we would raise the price by that exact amount to be neutral? Yeah.
Any other discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
I think it's a roll call.
Aye.
I don't think it's a roll call.
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All right, on to number two, B. Virginia Port Authority aid to local ports grant.
So we've been very successful with the VPA aid to local ports grant program. It's a, it's a, it's a great opportunity for us to make infrastructure improvements at the harbor. They have typically paid 75% of our cost. As you recall, the current project that we're working on now, which includes the inner harbor bulkhead rehabilitation, we're, we had three phases. We were able to receive grants for the first two phases, which we are currently doing. It's currently underway and should hopefully be, be done by early March. But we were not, we weren't able to get to phase three. So what this would do would authorize the mayor to make a request for 75% grant funding to finish phase three next year. That would be a grant of $166,000, which, which if we received the full 75%, would mean a $55,000 match to the town. So I would like to recommend that you authorize the mayor to put in for this, for this grant.
Your motion.
I make a motion we authorize the mayor to request a VPA ALP grant the amount of $166,100 for the rehabilitation of the inner harbor bulkhead phase three.
Second. Okay, second. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, just a question, Mr. Hosey. Budget-wise, are you going to include the 50%, which is the more conservative?
I typically do.
Okay.
Anything else? All right, all in favor of the grant?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. All right, on to C. Lease of harbor property to Maritime Institute.
So as I'm sure you have probably noticed, there's a lifeboat on Divas out at the harbor. I actually, when I first got here, I thought that was just there for static display. I didn't realize originally that that is for active live training for, for current mariners, which they, they still use. But interestingly enough, when we started doing research, we couldn't find any long, any actual lease for it. So they've just been renting the space like they would if they were a transient boat there. So they, I mean, they've been paying for it, but it's just as, as a dock space. Well, that, that lifeboat is antiquated and not really what mariners deal with now. So what they would like to do is upgrade it to a more modern form of lifeboat, which, which would require additional investment in the, in the mounting and all of that. We've had that all clear with our engineers. But if they're going to make that investment, they wouldn't in an actual lease. That was the purpose of the public hearing tonight, was, that was a requirement for, to enter a lease like this. And we were recommending that we, we increase what they're currently paying by 5% and then increase that by CPI going forward. And then it will allow for more realistic training. And since we do have a working harbor, it seems like an appropriate use of the space. So staff recommends roll call vote to adopt the ordinance.
Making a motion.
I'll make a motion that we adopt the ordinance.
Second. All right, I move for adoption of ordinance 20240215, grounding, granting lease of town property as noted and forego reading of the ordinance. This is a roll call vote, so.
Can I ask a question before we do the roll call?
Discussion.
Did, it may say that in here, but I didn't see it. Do they intend to use the existing area that they're?
Yes.
Currently using, they're not going to expand the area that they're on?
Correct.
Thank you.
Raise here if you have any questions.
Hmm?
We got a representative here. Just saying. How many years is the lease going to be?
I believe it's five.
Yeah, 27. Okay. Great. Any other discussion? All right, so this is a roll call vote, so Councilman Bennett.
Yes.
Councilman Buckholz.
Yes.
Councilman Buddha.
Yes.
Councilman Fulmer.
Yes.
Councilman Grossman.
Yes.
And Councilwoman Holloway.
Yes.
All right, it's unanimous. The motion carries. And on to D, the USDA grant slash loan resolution for the police vehicle.
So this is one of our budgeted vehicles, but it's, it has been complicated trying to keep track of what the vehicles were. We did, we did provide that report earlier, but just so we're clear on where we are with vehicle procurement, this is one of four vehicles that we are trying to accomplish this year. Two of them will be funded by two separate USDA grant loan procurements. The, another one is going to be budgeted, we're going to pay for just out-of-town funds, and then the fourth one is paid for by a DCJS ARPA funds grant program. So of the four, we've gotten two so far, and this is the second of the two USDA slash loan, grant loan programs. So that's where we are. This is number three of the four, and it's, it's our standard agreement for this, for this program, and I recommend approval.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we adopt the resolution 20240215.
Second. Any discussion? All right. I move for adoption of resolution 20240215 USDA ARD grant slash loan resolution. As noticed and forego the reading of the resolution, and we will go backwards this time, Councilwoman Holloway.
Yes.
Councilman Grossman.
Yes.
Councilman Fulmer.
Yes.
Councilman Buddha.
Yes.
Councilman Buckholz.
Yes.
And Councilman Bennett.
Yes.
All right, unanimous. Motion carries. And finally, legislative priorities update.
So I have just passed out a table that was put together by Councilman Grossman, and he has been an enormous help to me this, this session to try and keep an eye on things when I've been really too busy to try and figure it out. So I'm going to lean on him once more and ask if, if he's been closer eye on it than me, if he would go through his table and kind of bring us up to speed.
All right, so we had six bills that we were following dealing with short-term rentals, pot tax, registry at the state level, and accessory dwelling units. And they've all taken different lives and changes through the sessions. It's very frustrating to prepare comments for the mayor to speak at one of these meetings, and at the meeting, they change the bill.
Yeah, exactly.
And the public is not made aware of them until an hour or two later when they're posted in their, their information system. So this has been really, really challenging. But let me just quickly go through. The statewide registry and the pot tax, the second two bills there, house bills, they have essentially been put on hold or killed for this particular session. So that will not occur, and that's a big win for us. For the first one, the House Bill 1461, is, is a little nuanced with short-term rentals. Basically saying you can't prohibit solely on a renter subleasing for short-term rental. The word solely is in there, meaning that if you have other things that will prevent short-term rentals, they still hold. But there was a slice there that somebody wanted to put in. That passed the House, Bloxham voted for it, and now it's, it's going, it hasn't been assigned to a Senate committee, and we'll pick that up when it does there. But again, we should go on notice for anything that's still floating out there, saying that this is erosion of local control for our land use control. All right, so we'll, we'll go after now the Senate, the staff on that particular one. Moving over to House Bill 900, this had to do with ADUs by right and criteria. The House Committee with that one decided to move it off to 2025, which is, which is fine, and it'll be studied under the Virginia Housing Commission. However, the companion bill in the Senate, 304, got legs, okay? There was, they learned again from the, the failure of House Bill 900 in its comments, and they factored in an amendment for 304, and that had made it through the Senate, even though we had asked the staff to vote against it, which he did. It still passed, and it was a kind of 50/50 kind of vote. So we'll see what happens when it comes into the House. But again, we're going to have to go after Bloxham and the committee for that aspect. The last one, five, the Senate Bill 544, deals with conditional use permit for use of a residential dwelling as a short-term rental where the dwelling unit is legally occupied by the owner. To me, it was a homestay. They're basically saying if you have a homestay, you don't need a conditional use permit. We don't require it anyway, so it really, the last two, 304 and 544, really have been watered down such that it really doesn't hurt us at all. But we still need to go on record saying it's erosion of our control. We don't need control at the state level. So that is in a nutshell the six that we're following, and the, the last two were now assigned in the House to committees on counties, cities, and towns, and we'll start monitoring when that meeting will be and prepare a statement for the mayor to, to deliver, as we have done in the past, as well as going directly to Bloxham on those titles.
And in addition to offering my gratitude to Councilman Grossman, I also would like to thank the mayor for, for his time and effort, making himself available and putting himself out there to, to, you, you get the schedule, you think it's this time, and then it takes three hours later and he come back, and, and so he's been putting a lot of time in too, so I wanted to give kudos to the mayor.
Yeah, the jumble of even the agenda for that particular.
Yeah.
Once you're there, they move the agenda, order changed. So if you think you're second, no, you may have to sit there for two hours and wait for that bill to come up.
Yeah, because a lot of these senators and congressmen, just to let you know, they're on several committees.
Yeah.
And a lot of the committees are going to vote in the chambers, and so they put their bills first and move them out, and that's.
Yeah, it's, it's.
It's a wonder anything gets done.
It's not used. It's not user-friendly at all, no. Thank you, thank you both gentlemen, I appreciate it.
Thank you so much. All right. Mr. Hosey.
All right. One more hand up, will you, we'll take one of those and pass that on? Nope, nope.
Same old blustery day.
So Cape Charles Day is coming up. It's our first Saturday of March, as usual. And so I just wanted to kind of touch base with all of you on the process of what we're trying to do. I know at one point, council members tried to put together teams, and Tammy typically does that. I know she's not going to be here this year, although she's put in a lot of work in every other year. But I just wanted to kind of lay it out there for you and for the public and kind of get a sense for, make sure, get your blessing that the way we're doing it, okay? So like we did last year, because you never know how many people are going to show up. It's going to be weather-dependent. If it's a nice day, you'll get a lot of people. If it's a nasty day, you won't. But we're going to plan to meet down at the Beach Gazebo again. That's where we'll meet. Public Works will be there, we'll have all the equipment, the snips, the bags, gloves, everything we need. My suggestion is, is that council members who are going to participate, if you'd like, then you could form your teams then based on the people who show up. And then these are the areas on this map I just showed you that we'd be, that we'd be working on.
Can you read those out for the benefit of people out here?
Sure. So generally, we, it's been classified in the past as a town cleanup day, meaning you go out and pick up litter, and that's certainly part of it. But actually, we're fortunate that we don't have a lot of litter in Cape Charles. So we actually spend most of our time doing other things, mostly pruning and weeding, those types of things. So a lot of effort is spent on Washington Avenue, pruning and mulching those trees. And TAB has kind of already claimed Washington Avenue. But on Monroe, on the those middle strips, that takes a lot of work. And so we'll form teams to help work there. The North Peach Street area usually needs a lot of weeding, so we'll need a team there. But we will do some general litter picking up too, if there's families with children that want to go out and pick up litter. So we'll have it along Mason and Fig, just general litter pickup. Now, a lot of people like to come down and say they want to do the beach. That's always the most popular one. But two days after this, we're going to be doing Beach Week. I mean, we're going to be heavy equipment down there. And the dunes themselves, the Historic District Civic League has worked with Public Works to organize an effort to clean up the dunes. So they're doing it under the overview of Public Works. Basically, they're saving Public Works some time. And that's going to be like two weeks after this. So we're not, we don't have anything down at the beach this year. So we're not going to be working on Bay Avenue or the beach. So we, but we'll be focusing on these other areas. I've also been told Rotary is going to be doing their areas out of Randolph, out 184. They're going to be doing that that day as well. So we're hoping for good weather, and it'll be a really good turnout for the benefits to the town. And then we invite everybody back to Central Park, and we'll feed you lunch. And remember, this is one of two opportunities that we offer our locals to just mingle and meet council and staff. So we have the ice cream social in the fall, and we have Cape Charles in the spring. So I would encourage you, if you're going to be in town, to please come out and be there for that. That'll be at noon at the park. We'll have food, we'll have the tents set up with tables for groups that want to have tables there. And so I guess I also was kind of looking for a rough idea of who all is planning to attend.
Paul and I are going to meet at the gazebo in the park first.
Okay.
We start drinking early.
What about Andrew and?
Andrew and Ken?
Are you guys going to be available on the second?
Hello?
Are you still?
I have Ken on the second.
Okay.
Oh yeah, he has, yeah.
Okay.
It sounds like we lost.
I need the car, but I'm not sure.
Oh, you're fine.
All right. Well, again, if you can, if you can make it, please, please try to. Even if it's just showing up at noon to mingle with the, with the public, that's kind of important.
John, I would add back in, I know the, this lower part of South Peach is not available, but there's a lot of work that happens on the next two blocks.
Oh, you're right, you're right.
And that needs to be on there, and it should probably be pruning and weeding. Because they do a lot of pruning on, especially the 100 block of Peach.
Yes, you're, you're right.
Right?
The.
Yeah, just covers it.
Yeah.
And then I might suggest that we put a little asterisk at the bottom that says beach or dune cleanup day, and then list the day that that's happening.
It'll be the 16th.
Yeah, so put that on there so that people who see this in advance understand why the beach isn't on there. That there's a whole day kind of contributed to it.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that'll be from 10 to 2.
And my crew is already, they're going to be there.
Okay.
I'm designated someone else to be the leader of that, so they'll still, they'll still do their efforts.
Great.
They don't get off the hook just because I'm in Florida.
Who do you have?
Okay.
I have a whole crew.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll tell you. Yeah.
All right. Moving on. The SEC hearing this week went very well. I briefed last time that I was excused as a witness. All witnesses were excused. The examiner didn't ask any questions with regards to the stipulation agreement. It was more process-related questions. So again, things seem to be moving well. The request is to try and have Cape Charles be included under their interim rates on May 1st. So that's why we're hoping, if everything goes well, to try and close by the end of, end of April, if that's at all possible. That's a aggressive schedule, but that's what we're shooting for. If that happens, and if the commission approves this, our interim, we would be considered interim rates under VAW on May 1st. What that means is that our current rates become interim and are locked. The existing rate case, which won't be decided till later this year, if we're included in that, which we likely would be, and those rates would be lower than ours, our rate payers would actually get a refund for the difference between what those rates were starting on May 1st and what we've been paying. So anyway, it's been going, it's been going well, and so hoping it continues that way. We are all set up for our strategic planning session on the 24th out at the, meeting out at the Y. I've got representatives from the five major community organizations who will have a representative at the table with us. So that's going to be Main Street, the Citizen League, Vacation Homeowners,
Central Park.
Central Park, and the Bay Creek Board. So that'll be a good, that'll be a good discussion. Last week, we kicked off the beachfront master planning project. We met with the consultants on last Thursday, and we're, they're preparing a project charter that we're going to put out to the public and activate a online meeting room to start gathering information. But what I need to ask of you is I need to find out your availability, because I need your, I need to meet with you in a work session here fairly early on to make sure we're heading in the right direction. And I was going to propose, we normally meet on Thursdays, the last Thursday in March, which is the 28th. If that doesn't work, maybe the 27th, that Wednesday. Does anybody have a heartburn with that date? Could we pencil that in?
I'm going to have to check.
Okay.
I can do either.
Okay.
Me too.
All right, so I'm going to tentatively, I'm going to tentatively count on that. Also, I need to meet with you in work session to go over our status of our major projects, meaning the visitor center and the municipal center, and where we are with construction costs and all that. Trying to find a time to do that has been challenging, so I'm going to ask your indulgence for a little bit longer meeting on March 7th than we were planning. March 7th is going to be the special meeting for, it's Jody's show, to present the health plan renewal, and a special meeting for you to act on it. And at the end of the special meeting, I'd like to adjourn the meeting and convene a work session to go over where we are, what some of our options are, and get some guidance from you. And I think that's it.
All right. Any other council members have any comments this evening?
Two items.
Yes?
Just want to express gratitude for the presentations today. You know, library, fire departments, you know, Main Streets. Excellent progress demonstrated in those, and really impressive. The only other thing I had is Julia Jones had sent in comments. I responded to that, so just wanted to let you know that Cape Charles has taken action in the area of housing, which is not sitting here doing, doing nothing. So I responded there, and just wanted to make that known.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Andrew here?
Yes.
Okay, again, kind of a repeat, just to pay a great appreciation for the presentation. Definitely library has put their strides. Main Street continued great job. And on the fire department, I hear you on the issue of the inflation pressures and the demand of growth, and I know our contribution is static. So I would say this, we will revisit it to the council at this time.
Thank you. All right, well, I would also like to thank all of our presenters this evening. It was wonderful to see Main Street, the library, and the fire department come out this evening. Great presentations. I'd also like to pass on a great thank you to Councilman Grossman for all the help of keeping me straight this past week with where and what I needed to do with those houses and senates. And then also, just a couple things. February 19th, town offices will be closed for President's Day. February 24th, we'll be having the strategic planning joint work session at the Y, as Mr. Hosey has already said. February 29th, Town Council Planning Commission Joint Work Session. Again, March 7th will be our council special meeting. And then our regular town meeting will be March 21st next month. And then, just like we did mention earlier, the cleanup for the beach will be March 16th. There will be more out there on the town site, as well as on my site, as well as other sites out there, Main Street and so forth. So please mark your calendars. And if I could get a motion for adjournment, if no one has anything else.
So move?
Second.
And discussion?